Too much. Seven o'clock, I am going to call the Walkham County Council meeting to order and we will start with a roll call.
Blue.
Here.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown. Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Eric.
Scott Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Is Red on the phone?
He might be.
Okay.
I don't think we should do this.
Well, we'll treat this right now.
It's creepy.
We'll find out if he's here. Would you join me in?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I'll join you. The two of us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Announcements, if you have cell phones, please turn those off or to silent mode. If you have paperwork to give us, make sure you got a copy for the clerk here. And I think our first thing here is public hearings. We have two public hearings. Actually, this is kind of odd, but I'll get to that in a second. If you signed up in the back of the room for this hearing, we'll get a count of that. If you didn't sign up, we'll still make sure you get a chance to talk. Every speaker, make sure you state your name for the record and grab the microphone so it's like close enough to you to hear. Maybe not like that. You get three minutes and you'll have an announcement at two and a half minutes. The clerk will say 30 seconds and you can just keep going. If a large group of individuals have the same position on issue, we encourage them to select one or two representatives, but everybody is free to speak. So the signup sheets, there's two of them. There's a public hearing for the ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations for citing and establishing operating temporary homeless facilities. There's also a signup sheet for an emergency ordinance that we've already approved that you can comment on, but we've already approved it and we just have to sort of have a pro forma hearing on that. So I'm assuming most people want to talk about the actual ordinance, but everybody's got a chance to go here. So I will start with, I'll start with the first signup sheet, but this is the ordinance adopting the interim regulations. The second one that looks exactly like that is actually a second hearing, but I think we'll probably just do these in sequence. So, all right, so the first one, first name I have is Jim Peterson. Come on down.
I might be confused, so just bear with me. Because of the two, and I pulled them both off, one says 90 days on the tent encampments, another one says 180 days. I just want to make sure that the one you're going to, the interim has the 180 days instead of the 90 days. And that would be in the, I guess the one you already passed in section five, no, the one you were looking at, section five says 180 days, and in the one you passed it says 90 days. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page because I thought we'd already talked about the amendment. That's all I have to say. I support him. I know you were going to pass him, so.
All right, thanks, Jim. Doug Gustafson?
Okay, hi, I'm Doug, Technical Director of Homes Now. Earlier, a couple of days ago, I think we sent you guys two proposals for our proposed camp unity site. Basically, we had, one proposal included tents and tiny homes, and the other proposal included just tiny homes. Now, the reason why we had two proposals was because we basically wanted to give you guys options. So we wanted to, basically what Homes Now envisioned as anything related to, if we had tents, it would be very short term while the person who's in the tent is building their own tiny home and it's in the middle of being constructed. We never intended for tents to be onsite long term like what Seattle does or like what LA does. So, but basically, we're fine with either. We've just been working at this for a long time. We've been working with you guys for months. And we are just looking for something that'll work, that you guys will vote yes on, and we can move forward. And so that's the only reason why we're presenting multiple options. We're hoping that you can, we can make either proposal work. Basically, we're looking for a path forward. We're wondering if there was any way you might be able to get together, figure out which one of the four sites we've proposed would work best, and push through to make it happen. We're able to come up with more ideas, but we're not exactly sure which ideas you guys would be willing to vote on or pass. It's already midsummer. Pretty soon, it'll be winter. What do we have to do to prove ourselves and make this happen? We're fine with anything. We just want to help homeless people. So, anyway, take it easy.
Thanks, Doug.
Hey, Doug.
Councilmember Brenner.
Sorry, that's okay. You can get away with that. You said you sent us something?
Yeah, yeah. Two days ago, we have, and I put it there in paper form too. So this is the proposal that I have here that doesn't have any tents and it's, if you want to see it, it's got.
I don't even remember. Did I just not?
You might have not seen it, but there's a copy right here for you, so.
Did we get it a few days ago?
On an email.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, we're giving you guys options, so thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Mike Coffin?
Mike Coffman, Walkham County, speaking as a privileged white guy that spends, pays taxes. I support what these folks are doing. I have a place to live. I have a car. I have money. I have all the things that keep me out of trouble. And I have spoken many times, but just, it's, give people some place to go where they know they can be, that they're not going to be hassled, that they can put their stuff and they can lay out. I just support that as a voter. And whether it's popular or not with the voting public, it's time to do what's right. And I support this movement. These folks are putting a lot of energy into it. They're stepping forward to help solve a big problem for us, and they deserve our support to prove their point and to prove their energy and to help solve this problem. And last week, I was at the debate with the prosecutors, and both of them spoke if they were to get elected, that they would start releasing a bunch of inmates that are there for failure to pay bond and not having money and all the things that drove them, for whatever reason, the prosecutor, for not being maybe violent or other things. And so we better get on with doing something with the folks that are out there now because if that takes place, think about the fact that there's going to be a whole lot more people being released in the wintertime without places to go. So let's start dealing with it now. Thank you.
Hey, the next name I have on here, Charlie? Sturz? Oh, there's Charlie. Okay, like, your writing's as good as mine.
Fun to come back and talk to council again. I am speaking both for the emergency ordinance and for the whole process in general. It is so exciting to actually see some real action, at least apparently, if you approve the proposal, on the homeless issue. We do an awful lot of jowing and we keep saying, well, let's do a study here, let's figure it out, and people are still homeless. So let's get at least some people homeless. I think it's a good program. I like the, I just glanced through the rules of conduct and I didn't really see anything killer, so I think we're going to figure out how to work with this. And I think, you know, we've got a lot of energy. And one of the benefits to approving our process is that it's going to keep us busy for, at least until springtime. We will be unable to do any sort of agitation or pleasantries. This is going to be, you know, it's, at most, it's going to house 40 people or something like that. So it's not going to solve the problem, but it is a location where we're not going to be able to cause any problem, no matter what's going on. And let's get a program going and let's see what happens. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Charlie.
Your name?
Charlie Sturz, Roosevelt Neighborhood. Okay, so that is the extent of people who signed up for the ordinance that we're actually going to be able to vote on. Most people signed up for...
You still can talk.
Yeah, no, everyone's going to have a chance. Yeah, whether you signed up or not, we're going to make sure. But I just want to let people, right now, my script says we, if anybody else has not signed up, we can have everybody come down and vote. But a lot of people signed up for the one we actually can't vote on because it's a hearing on the emergency ordinance that we've already adopted. I got that right, right?
Just start calling names.
So I'm going to call names, and if I don't call your name, you can still come down. So I'm going to the next list. Lynn Lor?
I'm Lynn Lor from the Columbia neighborhood, but I don't know enough to speak. I would ask that you let me speak later after other people have spoken.
Okay, just make sure you have a chance.
Everett Barton of Woods Neighborhood. And I'm, I hit a snag in my rental situation that I'm not going to go into, but what happened, certain things, I found out that I was, I was a member of Homes Now. I didn't know that I was. I went to the Facebook page and tried to join, and when I hit the join button, it said, "Do you want to delete or unfollow?" And so I said, "Oh, I'm guessing I'm already a member." So I found that out. And then I joined the Bellingham Tenants Union. So if there's other folks in here who are representing Bellingham Tenants Union, I want to give a shout out for them. And we're trying to get more people who are renting to sign up for the Bellingham Tenants Union. It's bellinghamtenantsunion.org. And what we're going to do is, based upon the size of our membership, we'll have some clout to go down and tackle the landlord lobby in Olympia. And I'm going to be on the policy committee as a trained paralegal in another state. I've never practiced paralegal in this state because it's, we've been closed out as practicing freelance paralegals. You have to be in the law office in order to do that. But the idea of forming and fomenting policy around a Bellingham, around a tenants' union interests me to see how much traction we can get. Now, I'm going to be leaving Bellingham and going to Grand Junction, Colorado, where my daughter and my grandkids are. And I'm going to see about getting a tiny home put on that property. So when I come back in February to Bellingham, I'm going to be looking, I'm also on the section eight list. If, I don't know how that's going to work out with when I'm going to get a section eight voucher, but Homes Now is offering now, there's a possibility I can bring my tiny home down and join that group, actually with physical presence on that property, or just be in that, if I don't bring the home down with me from Colorado, I can just be down here and work to get a tiny home going. So I just, I'm not going to stay in Colorado. I want to see something, I want to try and generate some interest between generating Bellingham and Grand Junction to be sister cities. The city in the Intermontaine region, from Helena and Missoula down to Albuquerque and the Arizona cities, the Intermontaine region and the coast. It's going to be very important to have solidarity in global warming, climate change.
Three seconds, please.
Then we can get some solidarity, some sympathy from Grand Junction. If Grand Junction has problems, they can get sympathy from us. And they're putting sculpture on their corners, and we put sculpture on our corners. So it's easy to take Facebook photos and start doing the whole sister city thing. So thank you for your time.
Could you please state your name again? The staff didn't get it.
Everett Barton, Woods Neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Leathers? Leathers? I'm saying it right? I should have announced that I will butcher some names here, so.
It's okay. I'm speaking just because I know that you haven't passed this ordinance yet, but I want to thank you all very much. Thank you all. I don't have my, where are my glasses? Those aren't the right ones.
Right behind you.
Okay.
Right behind you.
Thank you. All right. Kathy Leathers. I want to thank you all so much for supporting Homes Now in acquiring land, establishing safe shelter for people who do not have a home. I think you guys really need a thumbs up. I know that this one hasn't totally been passed yet, but you have been so supportive all along. I appreciate your compassion and sense of justice for those who have little power of their own. I'm very proud of Walkham County, and most of it's because of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read a couple of names here. People are going to call them down at once so we can go back and forth. Lorena Havens, Karen Edlund, Alex McLean, and then Galen Hertz. Both mics work?
I'm Lorena Havens. I live out on Mosquito Lake Road out in the county. And I totally support this. Fortunately, I've had the opportunity to read them through. I'm very impressed. I'm impressed with the writing, the presentation. I think it's a great plan. But I'd also like to speak a moment for the fears that I hear people saying. And I think there's two fears. And one of them is a fear of our children, particularly our daughters, I mean playground. When I was a kid, I lived not that far from a park right by the railroad track where the hobos and the bums would get off. And we weren't allowed to play there. It was considered dangerous. These were strangers. And I think that's where a lot of fear comes from. This community is not going to be strangers. They're our neighbors. They're people who, chances are, lived next door to us before they became homeless. So I think that the fear that people have, of this kind of fear, is really baseless in this situation. I think the other fear that comes up is that, you know, for a lot of us, we're not that far from being homeless ourselves. You lose a job, you lose your social security check, an accident, hospitalization, and any of us could become homeless. And we feel sort of uncomfortable seeing other people homeless around us. And so we try to hide it. So I think you also are going to get a lot of feedback of people who are afraid of having to deal with the homeless issue. Where I think at the moment, this is such a hopeful sign. You know, even if I were to become homeless, there's possibility. There's people who are willing to work with us, who are finding solutions. And I just think that is so wonderful. And I think hope is really necessary in this time. But there's a lot of things that are against us. And the fact that you're going to be doing this, hopefully, is really wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. Karen Edlund, then Alex.
Hi, I'm Karen Edlund, and I support this. I appreciate your effort. You know, I'm in my 50s. I still have parents and brothers and children, so I have a safety net and lots of friends, but some people don't have that. And I really appreciate that you're taking this on. It's beautiful.
Alex?
Hi, guys. Alex McLean, Happy Valley. Thank you for getting this far, and thank you for giving folks the opportunity to do these types of projects. I don't have anything profound to say. I just have admired Homes Now vicariously, and I've seen them put a lot of energy and work into this project. I hope you are able to give them their preferred option, which I believe is option 1A. And, you know, as a construction goon, I hope to be able to help them out and get more involved because I see this as being a long-term problem in our community. And just any way that we can step up and, you know, push this forward, as you guys are, is better for everyone. So thanks for your work.
Galen, and then Hill Cummings, Lynette Allen, Hillary Cole.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Galen Hertz. I live in the Leonard Streets neighborhood, and I'm a member of the Bellingham Tenants Union. Thank you all for taking public comment tonight. I'm here supporting Homes Now and the temporary encampment ordinance because I want all of my neighbors to have a home. People shouldn't be dying on the streets every winter. I don't think that tent encampments and tiny homes are the solution to homelessness or housing affordability. They are one solution of many that we need, and some housing options will work for some people and won't work for others. I support permitted encampments because they provide a good option for some of our neighbors experiencing homelessness right now. And I've been impressed with Homes Now and their drive, their creativity, and their urgency. If the shower truck isn't a testament to Walkham County ingenuity and the desire and energy of people here to have a better place for all of us, I don't know what is. And Homes Now has already been building tiny homes and housing people in partnership with Lummy Stepping Stones. So I'm glad that the council here has been working with Homes Now in this ordinance. Please continue this work and help them find land and other critical elements for success. And thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hill, and then Lynette, and then Hillary Cole.
Hi, I'm Lynette Allen, and I live on Northwest in Bellingham, 40 years and 12 years at that location. And I just want to encourage you all to, to take this opportunity and say yes to camp unity. I just really think these people are amazing, Homes Now, and they definitely have been helping me. I volunteered with them and then found out I had to move because of a big hike at my rent. And I got a lot of help at Homes Now. So I'm getting a place, and they're helping me move as well. So, that's it.
Thank you.
I'm Hill Cummings. I live in Walkham County. I've been here three decades. I live on the north side of Texas Street in the 42nd. I've been around this community a long time, and I'm really glad that something is finally happening. I'm glad that you're doing something. And I don't know that, I'm sure that we've all talked about what's going on and what people are doing, but I don't know that we've actually embraced what can actually happen if something like this could exist. Connection to services, connection, a sense of community. Even it's like, we all have our little neighborhoods, our little whatever, but if we had a place to go, if everybody knew that they were welcome in this town and had a sense of community. And I just want to thank you for, and thank everyone who's like on this initiative, but now is the time. I've sat on a lot of boards and commissions and stuff, but we have to really do something now. And I think this is a very good start. And if there are hiccups, it's a good way to learn. It's a good way to do it better. But we have to build community, and this is a way for the people who don't have any community, their community maybe is lost. They're in the mission, they're on a doorstep. But we have to give people community in order for people to be part of our community. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, oh.
Thank you.
And then Hillary, and anybody else?
I'm Lynn Lor, and I'm from Columbia. And I want to say that this is a really good example of loving your neighbor, and I'm moved by it, very moved by it. It's a big, big thing in my life to love my neighbors. And I think that it's being done here, and a way is opening for them to be truly their best selves and to grow and to live and to help us. Each one that we give a home to is a possible helper of us all. Think about it. Be faithful, be strong, and move toward inclusivity. Thank you.
Hillary, and then anybody who hasn't signed up? Or you still have a chance?
Hi, my name is Hillary Cole. I live in Bellingham. Okay, Homes Now seems to be the only organization that never gives up despite opposition from the city. I wonder if this county has ever seen such a dynamic organization like Homes Now. I mean, really, this is unbelievable. Homes Now is unique in that it believes formerly homeless people should direct themselves, peers helping peers, you know, people who have been around the same block. Please provide them with the opportunity to put Walkham County on the map. Thank you.
Hillary.
I'm Amy Glasser from the Cornwall Park neighborhood. And I work with Homes Now. And I think what, I just wanted to discuss a bit about option one, option two, and some confusion. We started with wanting tiny homes. That's all we wanted, was to make tiny homes, and that was Jim's dream. As we're waiting and seeing the winter come, it's like, okay, what can we do now to make sure things happen even faster? I think the idea of adding the tents, although I will say, it does look fairly permanent when you look at those tents, really were the idea of having the people build the homes they'll be in. And then we slowly get rid of the tents as we fill those 12 tiny homes. We're starting with six and then to 12, and those people will be able to fill the homes as they build community as well as building the homes. So the idea was to get rid of the tents, because tents aren't permanent. I honestly, as a therapist, see some of these tiny homes as permanent for people. There are people who just don't necessarily want more than that. And if that's all they want, and that's going to keep them safe, and that's going to keep them off the streets and keep them healthy, then that seems to be a great goal for me. So what we're hoping for is the land, one of those locations, preferably northwest, because I think that's easiest to access for social workers, for the clients, for people out in the county, and least amount of neighbors nearby. We can't even be seen by the soccer fields or heard, and we can't even hear them. So I still have a little bit more time. Please. You know how many millions of mistakes we've made, and you're still listening to us. And I'll say to Barbara and Tyler, who were like first on board to say, "We get it. Please still get it. Please, everybody, understand that we will take 12 tiny homes, and if you don't want any tents to start working on them, then we'll bus people in to help work on their homes. We just want to make this happen." And I think if we got the 12 homes, if we can get them by December or November, then we have maybe 18 people housed. And then you'll love how great it is, and we'll put 12 more on, and it'll be a small, little community of 24 little homes that'll be painted beautifully with lovely landscape. Everybody who's going to be in those homes is going to be giving something. Part of the application process is, what do you give? And if they're disabled, maybe they cook. Maybe they can handle the front desk when people come in to visit others. We have it so planned so that everybody has a purpose. And I have to say, just that two, three-week tent encampment that we had in front of City Hall, a community was built.
30 seconds, please.
Oh, wow. And, damn. A community was built and a community actually died right before my eyes as it broke up. I know. I'm begging you. Please let them have, let Homes Now build those homes. I don't do any of the building. I do the summits, and I see the people who need these homes. I know you're going to do this because, because you get it. And we hope the city will come along someday, but they're not there yet, so begging you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Misty O'Loughlin. I live up off Cordada. I've been in and out of Bellingham when I'm in the country. I'm here for the last 10 years, and I absolutely love this place and the community in it. I'm a volunteer with Homes Now. I appreciate you guys listening to us and working with us. Honestly, winter is coming. People freeze to death. I know someone who froze to death. If this was any of our families, we would want this for them. And our community is our family. We would want them to have a sane, safe place to go while they transition into permanent housing. And like Amy said, if, you know, somebody wants to stay there, that's, but most people do want to transition. transition into permanent housing. And it's a great opportunity if you have a place to be safe and comfortable and part of something. Even if it's only a handful of people, these are human beings. Every single life matters. They deserve this. Our community deserves this. Please help us give this gift to our community's most vulnerable people and before the next person freezes to death. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty.
I'm Bea Ackland. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. I want to thank you guys all for your service on the council. I know that's not easy work and I know the hours that you put in. I've never once given testimony or spoken in a public setting like this for the county council, but I was moved to do so by that homeless encampment this past winter. Moved to get involved with Homes Now. I recently started volunteering with them and I'm in full support of, of their mission and of their proposal and of your ordinance. And I thank you for taking the time to, to get this going. I just, all I do for them is work on the mobile shower truck. And I can tell you firsthand, these people, this organization do amazing work to meet really basic human needs with immediate tangible results in terms of human dignity and, and life quality. So please continue to empower them to take the next step by approving this ordinance and supporting their plans. Thank you.
Thanks Bea. I like your sticker.
Carmen Gilmore, Watcomb County resident and also volunteer with Homes Now and Safe Storage. Just wanted to come tonight to say that I'm in support of Homes Now's, Home Now, Homes Now's Camp Unity at the Northwest site. And I ask the county to support this location also. I had the opportunity to visit TC5 in Seattle, Tent City 5, which Camp Unity is based on. And it was a thing of beauty. It was clean, it was orderly, it was well-run. And they did not have running water and bathrooms and sanitation were not a problem. I've heard that some of the soccer moms and dads are pushing back against having Camp Unity near the Northwest Fields. And my son actually is out there right now. In fact, I'm missing his last baseball game of the season to be here, which I'm super bummed about. But I feel super strongly about this issue and that's why I'm here. So I'm completely in support of having Camp Unity at the Northwest site and I hope to be able to see it there next baseball season and to see, and to stop in and say hi and lend our support to the residents on our way to and from games. I want our elected officials to do what is right and just, not what is easy to use our positions, to use your positions of power to stand up for and champion our most marginalized community members. When choosing who to support, coming down on the side of the marginalized and vulnerable, not the privileged. Please support Homes Now, Camp Unity at the Northwest location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. You've met me before. My name is Jacey Mansfield. I'm giving you a second copy of our Camp Unity handbook, which the title may change. We were thinking Unity Village or something to that extent. What I'd like to say, or at least quote, is something that Sharon Lee, which is someone you all met recently, stated in one of her articles saying, "Anytime a new multifamily apartment building is planned to provide homeless housing, it takes three to four years to get through land assembly, financing, design, building permits, and construction." We know building more low-income housing is the real solution, but with hundreds of families and individuals on the streets today, tiny houses are a viable, low-cost, and dignified solution in these safe lives. So, my purpose here is to just simply say to you that we are fully prepared to provide all the data that you need. So I'm coming from a technical person's involvement with Homes Now. This is a prototype. We don't have anything like this in this town. We would like to get this started so that we will have something with a baseline from start to finish to show what we need to do. So, we're going to identify our tasks, our costs, our timeline, the work that's needed, and customize some reports for all of you to look at from start to finish. So, that's my purpose here today. And I hope you'll go over the handbook again. It is a work in progress. This is our outline. This thing is going to grow to be this big. All right? We have inserts we're putting in for every managerial position, waste management, surveillance. All of the things you see in this handbook are just the headings. So expect it to grow. All right? And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Marcus D. Stidham, S-T-I-D-H-A-M, Watcomb County resident for 30-plus years. Good to see you all again. And I thank you so much for all the support that you've given us and what we're trying to do. I feel really great about what we're about to embark on. I see there's a lot of work ahead. I see you as partners in that and I thank you. I once came in here talking about how I had come from myself, a tiny home village, if you will, in a fishing village on Lummy Island when I first came out here as, as a kid. I moved out here at 14. The stability that that offered me was really something. I moved out of what we called the ghetto and found myself better housing. You know, things changed and I found myself, I need to go back to the ghetto. And when I did, there was no housing available. But this one needs work and you can camp in this one and we can get that one up. And that's what I want to do here. I want, I want, I want to be able to house people in the tents while they're working on their shelters and phase out of the tents as the shelters grow. I'm going to set that aside and say that that works. It worked for me. Okay? The other thing that I really want to talk about is Camp, I mean, the, the Site A out of Northwest. This is a public service area. We've all decided to service the public. These people are the public we're going to service. And this is a public service area. This is the location. There are no neighbors and it's a straight shot to Bellingham. You've heard all the rest, but really, this is where it belongs. These are the public. Let's service them at the public service location. Let's get started. Kids are in the, in the back of the car. Everybody's screaming, the engine's running, let's go. Okay? Thanks.
How do I follow that? Aaron Thomas, A-A-R-O-N. I wanted to give my, my testimony a little bit about, two years ago, when Lummy Nation, a few of us decided that we wanted to help our Lummy homeless, we were just community members trying to figure out what are we going to do next. We knew winter was coming. It was a few months from that, from then, in July of 2016. And you fast forward and we've helped over 30 families get into shelter, from, from shelter into their own place. And, and most of it in Lummy apartment housing. And I want to thank Tim, he was on tribal council back then. And, you know, one of the things that, when we did that, there was all kinds of questions about, well, you're going to put, you know, Lummy people in these shelters? Well, there's all these questions. Well, what if this happens? What if that happens? And I'm very thankful for the, the tribal council at the time who said, we got to take care of our people. We got to do this. And that first winter, who knows how many of our tribal members we would have lost had we not done this. And there was a million questions that, and, you know, all kinds of political, you know, we can't do this because I'm going to lose my base. I'm going to lose that family. You know, they're not going to vote for me. But you know what? All those folks that we've helped are now helping others. And if we could start over again, rather than doing the homeless shelters with Lummy stepping stones, I'd want to do tiny homes first. I would much rather do that because there's a lot less infighting that goes on. And, you know, if you live in your own little shelter, you're going to fight with yourself than with, you know, a group of people. So, I really urge you to, and I want to thank all the ones that came forward and shared their input with you, not just tonight, but over the last few months, six, seven months. And of course, Jim and the group and Homes Now. I'm really, you know, very blessed to, to see a, a group of leaders here that, you know, literally do care about the people. And my hands go out to you. Hi, Chukasim. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Krista Rome. And I have been reflecting a lot on the big picture connections here. I feel pretty strongly that our part of the country is going to be a climate refuge. It's going to continue to be an economic refuge for places that are more expensive like Seattle and California, climate refuge for the rest of the country as things heat up faster elsewhere. And I think as a result, a lot of the challenges that we currently face in our community are going to get even that much more challenging, particularly in regards to environmental protection and affordable housing and homeless issues. And at the same time, I think about how much our society has gone more and more away from having a community approach to things and more and more individualistic. And so in that context, I really don't want to underestimate the importance and the power of the community pulling together on an issue like this of average citizens. Many of them who are struggling a lot in their own lives, coming together with their time, their labor, and their support. I think this is really rare and precious and I want to see more of it. Far too many people are not engaged in community building these days. I mean, there's not really even very many people here at the meeting tonight, as you see. So in my ideal world, our elected officials would be visionaries that have those out-of-the-box, creative, timely solutions for us on these issues. But I am a little bit of an idealist and I recognize that from your side of the table, it's not as easy as it would seem. And I want to respect that. And so my second favorite option is for you to use your power and your position to do everything you can do to break down the barriers and the red tape that can get in the way of these very types of community organizations that are just trying to help others in our community. And so I thank you for the work that you're doing and I hope that you will apply that kind of thinking to other issues in the future as well. And I should share that with the city council also.
Thanks. Thanks Krista.
I'm Joy Gilfillan, president of the Restorative Community Coalition. And oftentimes when I come to the council, I seem to be complaining or talking negative about things or bringing forward challenges. Tonight, I have big hands up and thank you for looking at this project and truly taking it to heart. We have so many homeless people in this community. We have a lot of homeless people who aren't even counted in the homeless register. And a couple of years ago, I met a gentleman. He wrote a book called Breakfast at Sally's. He's from Bremerton. And I went down and met him and talked to him. He was a millionaire. He used to run an encyclopedia publishing company. And in under 12, 12 months, he went from being top of the economic ladder to being at the bottom homeless, living in his car and, and almost killed himself by jumping off a bridge, but his dog barking at him from his car made him not do it. And his story, not only the story that he wrote, but the story that he told us in a meeting, was real eye-opening to me. And what he said was that what he learned as a very, very wealthy man was completely different than what he learned in the streets. He said, "When I was very rich," he said, "I had all the boats, I had all the cars, I had two homes, I had a wife, I had family. The instant I went bankrupt, I lost it all, all." He said, "I lost it all." And he had to go back in the streets and learning, he typed the book from his car with a hand, with one of the old-fashioned typewriters. And he said, "What I learned was in the streets, people will give you the shirt off their back when they don't have another one. If you need it worse than they do, they'll help you." And I'd really encourage any of you to go read that book. It's Breakfast at Sally's. And for the life of me, I can't remember his name, but Irene might know it. But it's an amazing book and he's traveled the country. It was a bestseller. And he's traveled the country talking to chambers of commerce and top-flight people because he said, "You just don't see the world the same way at all." Second person that got my attention a few years ago was actually two people, two professors up at Western who ran a study on homelessness. And they presented five different proposals to the city and the county. It's the city, I think they brought it to the county as well. But they were five amazing homeless camp and transitional housing type proposals. One of them was to take a bunch of boats that can't float. Well, they can sit on land. So they rebuilt-
30 seconds, please.
-boat camps. And he had five proposals. I can email it to you. It's all available. These guys did an amazing job. And what these two, these fellows have done has given you a really clean, simple proposal and it's good work. And I really recommend endorsing that project out there. The third person, I'll make this really short. There was a woman who was in charge of a homeless project. And she said that she worked and she built people. What she would do is she would take the people who needed to sleep in the woods, she helped them.
Time.
When they moved up, she just graduated them up the ladder until they were finally free. You can do it here. Thank you.
Joy, will you send me the, the Western?
I will send, yes.
Okay, thanks.
We have been joined by Mr. Brown on the phone.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear you fine. You just tell me where you're on the agenda.
We are in public, I'm sorry, a public hearing on the interim ordinance for temporary homeless facilities. And we have more people to speak. Go ahead.
Good evening. Name's Dana Briggs, B-R-I-G-G-S. Homeless within Bellingham situation hasn't changed since December. However, I am fully employed now, so that's the good news. But even being fully employed doesn't get me out of the homeless situation. So, kudos to the council because you're setting a precedent that needs to be set because the way we get things changed in this country is not from the top down, contrary to popular belief. It's from the bottom up. It's where we can sit and look at each other and interact with each other and do the things that are necessary to help our brothers and sisters that are less fortunate out of the situations that they're in. Three things come to mind after listening to everything, everybody else speak tonight. Number one, you're setting the precedent that needs to be emulated by the other municipalities within this county. All of the concentration has been on Bellingham and the county at large, but we've heard nothing from Linden, from Ferndale, from Birch Bay, from Everson, from Nook Sac, from Custer, from other places. I think, and kudos to council member Buchanan and Brown for being on the task force, but this is something that needs to be spread county-wide and I'll keep harping on this until we get as close as we can to solving the issue. There are over 3,000 homeless people in this county and probably way more than we even realize. Point two, many of those people are homeless not because they want to be there, it's because they've given up. And they've given up because they no longer feel that they're part of the community because they're looked down upon in one form or another. Many of them are verbally abused. Some of them have addiction issues that need to be worked on, but the preponderance of the homeless are in situations like I am where I don't have those particular challenges. Our challenges are the economic side of the house and trying to find affordable housing, which is the, one of the reasons why the Bellingham Tenants Union realistically should be county-wide in my mind. Because developers and landlords have gotten totally out of control, but that's an entirely different subject for somewhere down the line. Lastly...
30 seconds, please.
In, when we think of the state that these brothers and sisters are in, none of this is ever going to be totally solved. We're always going to have this issue. But we have to do something to continue to get things done now. And so approve the plan, give them the chance to either do the tent to tiny home transition or the tiny home outright, but it needs to get done and it needs to get done now because I don't want to see anybody else dying on the streets from here on out. Thank you.
Thanks. Irene, and then if there's anybody else who still wants to speak about the ordinance on these zoning regulations, if you didn't sign up.
Good evening. Thank you. Irene Morgan, Watcomb County. Camp Unity, what an awesome title. Thank you, Jim and Doug, for all the work you've done and all the people that have joined you to do this work. There were a group, about 12 of us, 10 years ago, Bellingham's Friends of the Homeless that did similar, not nearly this in-depth, but we brought it forward. And as you know, I am founder of the Restorative Community Coalition, so I've been busy at other things. Not ever forgetting the homeless, however. I totally support this group of people in their quest and I highly, I, I just think that you all- you all have hearts and will do the right thing regarding these people that need our help. Many are employed, so how do they get ready to go to work? I'll bet they don't have a nice cozy bed that they've just gotten out of with a roof over their heads, a furnace that works or an air conditioner that works, a shower down the hall or across the room, food in the refrigerator in their kitchen, lean clothes. How do you, how do you get ready to go to work if you're homeless? I was involved in the point-in-time count a couple of years. Then things changed, and the Bellingham decided to go, or Watcom County decided to go with the federal regulations and count only those that were truly homeless or what they considered to be truly homeless by the federal standards, and did not include those that were couch-surfing. And the last time I was involved was about five or six years ago, and there were 1,300 homeless people. And I would very much agree with the man that just spoke. I know there's far more people homeless than we count or that we've, that we include in the count. I've told people that I work with the homeless, and some take two steps back from me because they don't understand that they're people, they're somebody's brothers, sisters, children. And I really know that when people have the opportunity to be good citizens and be able to do the things that we all want to do, I believe, we want to be good citizens, we'll do that. But many have conviction histories...
Seconds, please.
And there's, there's not much that you can do if you're homeless with a conviction And I believe that no one, as a child, aspires to be homeless. They don't go around saying, "I want to be homeless when I grow up." It's circumstances. And we all know that the circumstances lead us in places that most of us would not ever dream of being. And we've lost hundreds of people in our homeless camps and around the community.
Time.
I have great hope for our future, and I have great hope that you will support this group, doing the best work we can do right now, and we can, like other people have said, let's expand it. Thanks so much. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Irene.
Hi, I'm Victoria Savage. I'm from East County, Bellingham, Rome Valley, and I think the last time I talked to you, I cried during my entire testimony. So I'm, I'm literally sitting here, clenching my hands, digging my fingernails in to keep it straight tonight. So thank you, first of all, for all of your compassion. I've seen all of you help directly with the homeless, and I know we can do this together. And I want to say that so many people try to parse out the reasons for people being homeless. What is the trauma that created this? How did they get to that place? Well, sometimes it's just bad luck, like it was in my case. I had a month of savings, and that wasn't enough. The reason why I was crying is, and I was crying all throughout this testimony tonight, and I won't now, is because you're looking at 40 years after the primary trauma of being homeless. That is the trauma. We don't need to wonder why they're there. We need to address the trauma. It is 40 years later, and I am still traumatized by this. I'm not traumatized by the sexual abuse I had to endure, the harassment and the physical abuse that I took while I was homeless, none of that. I am traumatized by the mere fact of being homeless, having been homeless. We have a chance to stop this trauma. Please, I beg of you, please, please vote for Camp Unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak about the ordinance? If not, I will close the public hearing on this.
On the ferry, now?
Oh, we'll get to the ferry in an open session. Yeah, this, if there's anybody else that wants to speak about this ordinance on zoning, this is that, but we'll have an open session for everything else. Okay, so seeing nobody else, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Personias, I regret that I skipped the part where it said staff report, so I don't know if you, if you, I, I'm new to this. See what happens when Mr. Brown leaves?
I knew he was here for some reason.
Well, I, I think you've covered it. This is an interim ordinance, good for one year, that would authorize both temporary tent encampments and temporary tiny house encampments. They are temporary, emergency shelter. It puts in place standards, operation plans, management plan requirements, conditions that would need to be approved. And it mirrors kind of what the city has been doing, what the, what the state statute allows, and we go a little bit further than that in terms of protecting public health and safety and setting out the conditions and standards for those. So that is good for a year if you pass this, and then the idea being that you would work on, see how that works, and then work on permanent.
Ms. Brenner?
I just found out about these locations, and we haven't heard back from the deputy executive about locations, so do you know anything about them?
I, I don't. I haven't seen those, so I don't, I can't speak to them.
So I guess what I'm trying to, once, where's, is Tyler on vacation or what?
He is, yep.
When's he gonna be back?
I think next week, yeah.
Okay. I know the executive's here, and maybe Executive Laus could answer some of this. I don't know. I just would like to know what, what, there's four places listed on one of these things, and do we have any information?
This is Executive Laus. I haven't seen the documentation either of the four proposed sites. I'm not on the mailing list that it comes. I'm assuming that council has gotten some stuff, but I haven't seen it, and I won't be prepared to comment on them tonight.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't think so, but yeah, if you wouldn't mind taking these, because I just got these now, too. But I would like us to be talking about sites.
Yes. Of course, the ordinance tonight establishment establishes the ability for the county or for religious organizations to cite homeless camps, either through religious organizations or nonprofits. The citing of the facility would be a separate action. I think the first thing the county would need to do is identify the site, determine the appropriateness as it relates to wetlands, services, so on and so forth, develop a lease with the organization, go through the standard indemnity fee, insurance, obligations, all that good stuff, lease of property, which the council would have to approve. And then the, along with that, I'm sure concurrent to that would be for the group to put together the whole work plan that would be established under that. So for now, the establishment of the ordinance would make that possible, but then the work begins for the organization and for the county as it relates to the citing. And as I've articulated in the past, the approval of the site is going to be a council action. We'll definitely comment on it for you.
Mr. Buchanan?
Hopefully soon.
Oops, sorry.
That's okay. I just hope that soon.
Mr. Buchanan?
I would move approval.
I'll second that.
I second that.
We have a motion and two seconds.
Double second.
Couple of seconds.
Okay, so we have a motion and further discussion on this?
The only discussion, I just was also thinking, as I was reading through the ordinance, as well as the emails I received from you, I think what, what council is doing is actually we did, when we did the emergency ordinance, you can next day go and make an application. You know, like the biggest thing is what we can do is set a policy that you can go and apply. But when you go apply, I don't think council is the place to make an application. You know, like if you read section seven and eight, the seven says, "application," there are county forms, and number eight says, "permit procedures," right? Of course, county, council has to approve the lease, so I think what Mr. Laus has said is, is you could have made that application even 10 days ago, because even if this temporary ordinance passes or doesn't pass, you are already authorized with the first ordinance we approved, that go make an application. I mean, this is how I understand the process of this, right? You don't have to wait even for tonight. And, and sending this is great, like we would love to have that information and help you with that, but I don't think that we're gonna take an application, say you can take this site or not that site, because the way this ordinance is written, like it could be a dollar-a-year lease, but there has to be a document for that, that you're using county property, it has to be leased to homes for now, right? And, and same thing, whatever the process you wrote and process is written in here, you must have insurance, must have this, must have that, must have that. I don't think council's gonna look at it, Mr. Personias and his team, or Jack is the person. But once they say, "Out of these four sites," or if you run into problem, they say, "None of the site is available. Come to us, we'll talk about it." Why? But I, I don't know. Correct me that, can we approve the site tonight? I mean, we will do that. I'm just looking for clarification myself.
No. No, what's up tonight is, is a hearing and adoption of the ordinance that it's enabling legislation that creates the standards for an application.
Yes.
As the county executive said, it's, part of the requirements for the application to meet the standards are that the, the organization has to be qualified organization, first of all, and then they have to own or, or control the land on which the proposed encampment is to be cited. That is a, if it's to be county land, then that's a separate action that the county would have to take.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I just wanted to say, I hope I'm not gonna cause a, you know, a storm of people to go to Lummi to look at that wonderful project there, but I am just so amazed by Homes Now, the tiny homes. I, I've just, I, I think, I disagree with some of the council members that this is a solution until we find something better, if anybody said that, which I thought I heard, but I don't know. To me, having those tiny homes is a, is a solution for so many types of people, for not just homeless people, but they're just amazing, and I do hope people will go and look at that project out there. I hate calling it a project, that village, it's wonderful. And to have those little tiny homes together, to have that spirit of community there, I think we need more of it, no matter what, even if we ever solved homelessness, I think we need more of that. So I do appreciate the tiny homes, the way it was brought forward and what it is, and I think it's wonderful. So I, I'm really hoping we get our sites soon. Sites, soon.
Any other comments here? I guess I'll just echo what Councilmember Brenner's saying. This is the first step. We need to work on locations. So, any other comments? So roll call vote? Oops, sorry, Mr. Sidoo.
I'm just gonna just make comment. If you have a private land, you control that, you can go tomorrow and, and make your application. I mean, that's the process I understood from the day one when we were writing this legislation.
They can apply.
You know, okay, thank you, that's all.
Okay, hearing, no more comments. Can't see Mr. Brown, is your hand up?
Oh, gosh.
I'm kidding. Shouldn't have done that. Okay.
I knew you were gonna do that.
All right, so there's a roll call vote.
Tim Baloo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Red?
Sorry.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sut Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Hey, that passes 7-0. All council members in favor. So now the confusing part. We are now gonna have a public hearing on the emergency ordinance that we've already adopted, that this interim ordinance has repealed, which is why you had the confusion with the signup sheets. I, it's a rule, we have to...
Repeal it?
Just a procedural...
It's a procedural hearing where if, I think most people...
All the comments from the prior hearing can just be applied to this one.
Okay, so I move approval.
I have to first open the public hearing for the thing that we really can't vote on, because we've already...
Nothing to approve.
It's in the script here. So hearing, no comments on that? Now I close the public hearing? So I do?
I move approval of the repeal.
I second that.
But we, there's no, no, there's nothing to actually do.
Oh, we don't do anything?
We hope, we just do what I just...
Well, that's easy. I like doing that.
It's, it's pretty absurd, but...
Good job.
But we did it, and now I say thank you, so we're good. All right. Okay, so now for people who want to speak on other matters, we have open session. During open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address council on any issues relevant to council business. Same thing, state your name, topic of interest. If your name's hard to spell, spell that out, help the clerk, speaking of the microphone. So anybody on other matters want to come on down, you can line up two lines here on the mics, and thank you.
Dear county council members, Protect Lummi Island Community, PLIQ, is a nonprofit organization whose sole mission and goal is to promote public awareness and develop community consensus on transportation and very related matters on Lummi Island. For the past nine years, many citizens in various committees and groups have worked countless hours and participated in hundreds of public meetings to develop and help develop the ferry project proposal and Life Act's recommendation to county, to the county council for adoption. In conjunction with the research and report by the ferry consultant, KPFF, Life Act has conducted monthly public meetings, researched critical areas such as level of service, with many hours of volunteer study. They've developed community surveys, and along with PLIQ, held several town hall forums to gain public input. In short, Life Act's ferry recommendation now before the county council has greatly benefited from the extensive community discussion and citizen suggestions, and has also taken into consideration a broad array of issues and transportation needs for Lummi Island and the county. PLIQ strongly supports Life Act's ferry project recommendation for a two-phase development process, which addresses the critical need for a replacement ferry for the Watcom chief, as well as balancing both the short-term and long-term transportation needs for the county and Lummi Nation's future marina plans. PLIQ respectfully requests that the county council, after due consideration, adopt Life Act's ferry project recommendation. In cooperation with the Department of Public Works and the broad public support, Life Act has provided admirable service for the greater community of Watcom County. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, council members. My name is Beth Louis, spelled L-O-U-I-S. I'm from Lummi Island. I have 30-plus years of transportation planning and engineering experience, and I've participated in the planning, funding, and delivery of many large infrastructure projects. I've also participated in the ferry replacement project and in the work, I listened to the work session this afternoon, so I'm gonna focus my comments on that discussion. So regarding the size of the vessel, I think that that came up. There's a big difference to me between having no boat and 100-vessel boat. So the difference between a 34-vessel boat and something slightly smaller than that is fairly minimal in terms of the cost, especially whenever we're considering this over 60 years. A 34-vehicle vessel can accommodate the times when the demand is high, and that's occurring more and more seasonally, not even just in the summer, and it still protects our fares because the costs are gonna be less, whether it's 34 or 28. So we're planning for a 60-year, 60-year asset, just like you would do for a road or a bridge, so I think we need to think of those future generations and how the boat would be used over that. So my husband and I have already submitted a letter of support for this, but I just wanted to urge you to vote approval for Life Act's recommendations, and thank you for your work and for all of Life Act and Public Works' work. Thank you.
My name is Adam Lamb. I live in Blaine. I'm a member of Labor's Local 292, and I'm here tonight to... I'm a member of Labor's Local 292, and I'm here tonight to ask you guys to please not move forward on the Cherry Point fossil fuel moratorium. It is critical to our elected officials to support industry and jobs in our area. Your agenda is laid out, and the April's resolution has the real potential for harming Wacquem County's economy. I know many people that rely on jobs at Cherry Point to support their families. If you move forward with your plans for Cherry Point, you will cost jobs and hurt the families that rely on them and live in your community. Your actions have, sorry, real consequences to people living in this area. Please remember that. Thank you, have a good night.
Good evening, my name is Bill Lee, and I live on Lummi Island. This afternoon, you got a bit of history from the Director of Public Works. For the last twenty years, I've been in the room for most of that history, one way or another. I encourage you to go forward and approve what you were given this afternoon. The last time I stepped up to the podium regarding the possible purchase of a ferry by this council, there was perhaps hours of public input into that process. This time, there has been years of public input. I hope you will review it carefully, or have reviewed it carefully, and will approve it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Stacy Martin, I'm the Business Manager of Labor's Local 292. I'm an elected official of over twelve-hundred-and-fifty members, which a third of them live in your guys' county. I'm here to talk about Cherry Point. Moratorium will affect not only the current working members, but it's also gonna affect the retirees that reside in Wacquem County, that have raised their kids here, that have friends, family, and everything else. You know, I sat here tonight, and I had, I have, I've got statistics I can throw at you, but I'm sure you guys know them. But I listened to what you guys are trying to do with tiny homes. Put sanctions and restrictions on Cherry Point, you're gonna need to build thousands of cherry, of tiny homes, because you're gonna affect your economy, you're gonna affect this county, you're gonna affect the livelihoods of not only the members out of the local that I represent, but every one of my brothers and sisters who watched their parents, their grandparents, they have their own children that are now in apprenticeship programs, working out in those areas, will be affected by those moratoriums. That moratorium, if you think about it, if you take the money that is made out there, the money that's contributed back to the community, and you take it away, you're gonna have a bigger problem just homelessness. You're not gonna have funding for the schools, you're not gonna have funding for the Boys and Girls Clubs, you're not gonna have those tax dollars that come from that area. You guys will stunt the growth of Wacquem County. You guys will shrink this area, and you will have more homeless people, you have less people that will afford to build more new homes, grow the community, bring in other businesses, whether it's for tourists, the mom-and-pop's lumber store, those things will start going away. Because that area, and I know there's issues, I know there's concerns that a lot of people have, but I think they're being addressed. I can stand up here and proudly say that my union, that I represent, is probably one of the most progressive of getting away from fossil fuels, and we're constantly looking at other ways, whether it's solar, wind power, how we can help get there. But we all know in this room, if we honestly look in the mirror, we won't get there tomorrow. It won't happen. You can't just flip the switch.
Thirty seconds, please.
I really want you guys to look at what you're trying to do with that moratorium, and look at Cherry Point, and look what it's done for Wacquem County for decades. Like I said, I've got members that are on their fifth generation that has created livelihoods for that entire family, from what you guys are trying to do, tighten things up on and everything else, and it will affect Wacquem. I think you guys know it, and it will stymie the growth.
Time.
And will have a ton of more tiny homes to build. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Colburn. I have the honor of serving as a non-island resident representative on the Life Act Committee, and I'm just here to urge your passage and support of the Life Act recommendation tonight. We have spent a long time, as you've already heard, you've gotten a lot of detail about it. It's really been one of the best public processes I've been involved in. I've worked in public transportation forty years, on the operations side than on the planning side, but it, a lot of work has gone into it, as Nancy said this afternoon. The committee really did a lot of the hard work of having a lot of hard conversations and drawing out a considerable amount of public input and different opinions, and kind of settling on what the most of us all could agree on and come together on. So, that's my first purpose. My second purpose tonight is just to urge the support of the appointment of Nancy Ging to the committee. She has been our chair over the last year-plus, and she has been so great, and she's a big part of the reason that we're here tonight. So, thanks a lot.
My name is Mike Llewellyn, Labor's Local 292. I ask you not extend the moratorium on fossil fuels and permits at Cherry Point. Cherry Point companies have provided family using wage jobs for decades. The policy you are pursuing will drive industry and jobs out of Wacquem County. As you heard my business manager say, the tax dollars that'll be lost in this, you guys are gonna have to look yourself in the mirror and say, is that really what we wanted to do? The job loss, and it's gonna be gone. You're gonna kill the industry, you're gonna kill the communities. You know, there's gotta be a better resolution to all of this. I ask that you abandon your efforts on this moratorium, that's all I have, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dave Brumbaugh. I'll offer the clerk a card for the spelling. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for the air-conditioned chambers. I too am here tonight to urge you not to pass an ordinance that would once again extend the interim moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications and permits for new or expanded facilities in the Cherry Point urban growth area. We are stretching beyond recognition the definition of interim. I ask you to stop proposed changes to the Wacquem County Comprehensive Plan and Wacquem County Code that impact Cherry Point. Cherry Point is the economic engine of Wacquem County. The existing regulations have served this community well, and there is no need to change them. Efforts to restrict Cherry Point companies will have far-reaching and negative impacts in Wacquem County. If successful, you will cost us jobs at existing companies and put a chill on future investment from other companies that may have wanted to locate in Wacquem County. The economic impact of Cherry Point bears repeating. Cherry Point companies create over twenty-one-hundred family wage jobs that pay an average of a hundred fourteen thousand dollars per year. Cherry Point companies generate over two-hundred million in annual tax revenues that fund our schools, emergency services, and other important social services. And Cherry Point companies contribute over one million annually to local charities. I urge you to preserve and develop Cherry Point jobs, not destroy them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Daniel Bostelman, I live in Ferndale. I have lived in Washington, in Ferndale, Washington, for the last eight years. Just a little backstory, I'm a U.S. Navy veteran, four years, and I also am a, just finished up my apprenticeship in the Local Union 191, and became a licensed journeyman electrician, general electrician, after five years. I'm coming to talk to you about the moratorium ordinance, and asking you to please not renew your efforts with that. In particular, the reason why is we have good-paying jobs there, that many of us, myself included. This is close to home. I can work at other places if I wanna drive three or four hours, if I wanna drive to Seattle and work there, I, there's opportunities for me to work there. But I know for me and a lot of my friends that I've grown up with that live in Wacquem County, if the jobs aren't at the refineries or very close by, we are looking at possibly having to sell our homes and move. It's just flat-out where it's at, or unfortunately, like the gentleman that was going before me, possibly face going into low-income housing of, as appears that we have quite a bit of problem with that already in Wacquem County. I don't think that fossil fuels is the enemy. As electrician, I can appreciate trying to get alternative forms of energy, absolutely. In fact, I support it probably more than most, and I understand how to get it. But you don't stifle out a business in order to have the other one flourish. What you need to do is focus on improving the business of solar or other renewable forms of energy, which we will get there, electric vehicles and such. If you bring those up and highlight those, and maybe provide tax breaks in the economy, if you support those businesses rather than killing the other businesses, fossil fuels, while it's been the frontrunner for a long time, it's also losing market share, slow, slowly, but it is losing market share, and I see a progression away from that. But like some of the people before me said, if we said, uh, no more fossil fuels tomorrow, what would you do? Can you ride a bicycle to work? Maybe. Do you have an electric vehicle to take? I do not. I do wish to own one at one time. But freezing, freezing the expansion at Cherry Point really puts a big-time damper on myself and the community, and for many members of my local union, and I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you.
My name is Chet Dow, I reside in unincorporated Wacquem County at 5491 Woodford Way in Bellingham. I come before you this evening to request that you rescind Resolution 2018-015. Our current comp plan and county code regulations governing permitting processes for Cherry Point provide more than adequate checks and balances for public review of any proposals for Cherry Point, whether they're related to energy or anything else. Please do not move forward with proposed changes to the Comprehensive Plan and County Code relating to the Cherry Point urban growth area. Resolution 2018-015 has potential negative consequences for future economic development and job creation in Wacquem County. Rather than sending a positive message that Wacquem County is open for business, the underlying Resolution 2018-015 creates an opposite and chilling message for future economic investment and opportunity. The practical consequences of piling on more conditional use permits with unnecessary requirements will hinder the process of upgrading our existing valuable industrial facilities in Wacquem County. Wacquem County desperately needs more family wage jobs, and our Cherry Point companies create them. These businesses compete in a global economy. If they are not allowed to grow and make business decisions based on changing worldwide market conditions, they will cease to be competitive operating here in Wacquem County. The unintended consequences of bad policy can adversely impact our county's job growth, tax revenues, schools, and charities, and will be severe if not devastating should this scenario be allowed to continue on its present path. Again, please rescind Resolution 2018-015. In closing, I would also like to urge you to withdraw the proposed ordinance found in Agenda Bill AB 2018-077B, scheduled for introduction later this evening. Please do not extend the fossil fuel permit moratorium. Thank you for your time.
No, this side, come on.
Somebody blink.
He's supposed to go back and forth. He was so eager. Joy Gilfill in Wacquem County, I'm here to speak actually about the mental health hospital. I have no idea if any of the issues regarding the mental health hospital are going to come before the Wacquem County Council, but I'm in favor of it, I'll get back to that in a minute. In the meantime, I want to speak in favor of imposing the interim moratorium on the Cherry Point matters. I think that the Wacquem County Council has done some really extraordinary work on this. I think a lot of people have done work to maintain, moving forward to ensure that we have good quality environmental, public safety, ecological, all of the things that you guys are working on, keep it up. I'm proud of the council for standing forward on that. Back to the mental health facility, twenty-one million dollars, private company wants to bring it to Wacquem County. There was a public hearing in this, these chambers on Monday, I believe, or last week, Thursday. I think it's probably one of the single smartest things we could do in Wacquem County right now is to allow them and to support them coming here. I am a person who has stood against privateering with private companies who are doing contracts with the government that are behind the scenes. That is not the case with this company. This company is actually doing some amazing work in mental health recovery, they want to bring seventy beds here. And in the course of doing my research behind bringing this hospital here, I found out something that I didn't know, out of all the years that I've been sitting, listening to our health department talk about all the good things that they do in mental health and all these things, I managed to somehow miss the point that Washington State ranks fiftieth, fiftieth, the bottom of the barrel in providing mental health services in this nation, and Wacquem County is second to the bottom in the state of Washington. We don't have a behavioral health needs assessment in the county, yet our county spends a bunch of the money from the behavioral health tax on planning to build more and more facilities. And ironically, our health department has been promoting, and I'm really glad that we have the thirty-two-bed facility coming, and it's gonna cost somewhere between nine and twelve million dollars, depending on who you're listening to. And that's excellent, but then Ann Deacon is recommending perhaps removing the fifteen beds in the jail, right? The triage facility, fifteen beds? Thirty seconds, please. So now we're talking about the county wanting to build a thirty-two-bed facility, remove fifteen, leaving us seventeen, for a total of about nine to twelve million bucks. I think Wacquem County officials, our elected officials and our bureaucratic leaders, need to start really looking at where we're spending our money and who we're spending it for. Mental health is the number-one problem that plagues every single person who goes into the Wacquem County jail. We need help in Wacquem County, we need it now. I support that mental health facility, they're good folks, thanks.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eddie Urie, I'm the Clean Energy Program Manager at Resources for Sustainable Communities. First off, I just wanna say I'm glad to see progress moving in development of a draft ordinance for land use in Cherry Point. Would have a lot more to say about that, but I hope you can read some upcoming written comments I'm gonna send in. Right now, I wanna speak to the item for introduction tonight, the interim ordinance moratorium on Cherry Point. This will be the fifth time the moratorium has been extended since it was first introduced in 2016. And, you know, fact is, we know that nothing you do is gonna drive away industry at Cherry Point. It's thriving and growing, but we know that we've had our fair share of impacts, and that geographical and economic factors make this area targeted for increases in transport of hazardous and explosive materials through the community. We need to put a pause on things, step, take a step back before... We need to put a pause on things, take a step back before, and get our policies, permit processes, straight before letting things move forward. We know that in 2013, Watcom County permitted rail terminals to offload crude oil in the Cherry Point UGA that has brought near daily shipments of crude oil by unit train, introducing threats to our community that didn't exist anywhere in the United States as little as seven years ago. And then since then, we've seen a dozen explosions disrupting communities, hurting people across North America. That's a risk that's in our communities now. Those projects had basically no environmental review, no meaningful conditions. They had determinations of non-significance. It's that kind of thing. When that can happen, we need to take a step back and look at our permitting process. But I want to actually ask you to take a step further, since this item's up for introduction. You have the opportunity maybe not to do the exact same thing for the fifth time. I want you to look carefully at the language, because clearly, I mean, when you introduced this thing, your aim was to protect the industries at Cherry Point and allow them to thrive. And underneath this moratorium, since it's been in place since 2016, there have been several expansions in the area. There's been two major upgrade projects, the BP refinery that's expanded their processing capacity by 4% or about 9,000 barrels a day, and as well as another upgrade project that incidentally allowed them to increase their processing of heavier, more high sulfur crude oils, tar sand, synthetic crude, diluted bitumen. That'll happen under this moratorium because of its narrow definition. Likewise, petrogas, which took over the Intalko Pier a few years ago-
30 seconds, please.
...has quadrupled the amount of propane they're shipping out through Cherry Point, all underneath this moratorium. So I'm asking maybe, since we're getting close to a final ordinance, if we could consider removing the word "unrefined" and striking the terms, you know, fossil fuels not to be processed or consumed at Cherry Point, and the terms that exclude those products that are refined at Cherry Point. If we could strike those terms for now, just have this be a blanket moratorium, just for, you know, at most six months, maybe we do it one more time until we get a final draft ordinance that, of course, allows growth and development with conditions and restrictions and protections. So I hope you would consider this this evening. Thank you very much.
And then if anybody else who wants to speak in open session, come on down now.
Mike Kaufman. Being a person that's looked after utility issues for a long time, I'd like to second for another time what resources and the work that they're doing and the comments that they're making, and I support you in the work that you're doing on Cherry Point and the ordinances to help strengthen our communities, and I support you on what you're doing. Please go forward with that.
Krista Rome, R-O-M-E. All right, so the Fourth of July was a challenge for me this year, and a lot of my friends. I'm not a vet. I don't have a dog. I don't have anxiety issues, but every year I find myself having to flee the county to get away from the explosions. I either go and sleep in my car at the top of the mountain, or ironically, now I come to Bellingham because it's a lot quieter here. And I feel like if it's such a challenge for me, what is it like for people that have actual issues that I mentioned? And so I just want to talk about this now, while it's not too far past the Fourth, before it gets to next year, just a little bug in your ear. My radical self would love to see personal fireworks completely banned anywhere in the county. But a baby step that I want to propose is a consideration of fireworks ban in the Lake Watcom watershed. I've done a lot of research or read a lot of information about impacts to human health, having the toxic chemicals and fireworks in our drinking water source, and also to the fish and other critters that live under the water. So I don't have an ordinance to propose to you, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to mention that idea.
Carly Storms. I live in Bellingham. I just want to say that I want to extend the moratorium. I think it's a really appropriate action to do in this time of climate change, and we need to really quickly respond to the fossil fuel rises, and we need to reduce fossil fuels in our environment. But I also hear the need for jobs. I know our economy is kind of hard to find. I guess it's easier to find a job. I was not prepared. But I hear the people that really need jobs, but I also know that if we don't address our fossil fuel issue right now, yesterday, 30 years ago, we're just going to end up all, I mean, we're just hindering ourselves and making the world a less livable place for future generations. And so we need to come together and work together and figure out a way that we can solve both those issues at the same time. Thanks.
Last chance for comment. Well, not the last chance, after Carol.
Carol Perry, Watcom County. I always get emotional when Cherry Point comes up. I go back to the day when Max and I were sitting in the chamber, and you came up with the amendments, Councilman Donovan. And then Councilman Wymer said, "No, no, I've got something better." And then I remember when you read the two pages, Councilman Buchanan. And then I remember that it was an emergency and that the executive was out of the country, so it had to be signed without him. I remember all of the testimonies of the people who worked at Cherry Point when we had the hearings for the Planning Commission. There was two. The chambers were full. I remember when Carl Reimer said, "We want the business community to come. We want to hear from them." You, well, the council, heard from them in a big way. And here we are. You know how much time Max and I spend here. I didn't know it was on the introduction items again tonight until several people testified. This has gone on way too long. Please don't extend this. Listen to the common sense testimonies of hundreds and hundreds of workers and people. Thank you.
And if there is nobody else who wants to speak in open session, we will close public comment. Okay. Thank you all. And we are joined by Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll lay. Please continue, as chair. And just for the record, while I was in transit, I was not driving.
Okay. Not that we, it's good to know. Okay, so we're moving on to the consent agenda from Finance and Administrative Services, and Mr. Sudeen.
Yeah. We had a meeting at 11 o'clock. I was actually excused from the meeting, but here are three items on the consent agenda, and they received 2-0 vote, and I so move for approval.
And that is not a roll call. Okay. Any discussion, further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Okay, other items from Natural Resources Committee? That was me. We had a vote on a resolution recommending to county council to support the 2018 Watcom County Agricultural Strategic Plan, and that passed with a vote of 2-0. I think we were, yeah. So do we have a motion to adopt Resolution AB 2018-217?
Second that.
Okay, and this is also a resolution, so any discussion on that? I can, yeah, Mr. Berg.
No, I'm still going to ask, that this be held till next time? I'm still waiting to hear back from a couple individuals that I'm looking for some information on.
We do have a motion to approve this. Is that a motion to table?
Yeah.
Which, Mr. Sudeen.
I was going to ask, can you explain that again? I didn't quite get it.
Oh, it's the same thing I asked earlier in committee. I'm asking that this be tabled till the next meeting we have. I put in some calls, and I'm waiting to hear back from some of the committee members that are on the committee. It's farming season, and they're all farmers, so getting back to me is a little difficult, and I'm just waiting to hear.
Yes, and I agree in a way. I had to leave towards the end of the meeting, so I wasn't able to ask some questions. And I do agree with their plan, what they have presented, but there are some questions I would like to clarify as well. So, and this is not something urgent or they are waiting for. If we can wait till next meeting, I'm okay with that.
Does a motion to table supersede a motion? Okay, so we have a motion, and there was a second to table?
I'll second that now.
Who's seconding that? Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That's aye. Okay, that passes 7-0. Back to Finance and Administrative Services.
Yeah, so this is an ordinance, we had a discussion in the executive session also. The ordinance is establishing the Swift Creek Sediment Management Fund and establishing a budget for the Swift Creek Sediment Management Fund, AB 2018-208, and I so move for approval.
Discussion? Okay, that's a roll call vote.
Tim Baloo.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Byrd.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Sup Paul Sudeen.
Yes.
Okay, that passes 7-0.
Yeah, the next item is the Ordinance Amending Watcom County Budget Ninth Request in the Amount of $2,014,284, AB 2018-209, and I so move for approval.
Berg.
Councilmembers, Sudeen, we actually made an amendment to that, so it's the new blue.
Blue.
I see that this is the version we are talking about.
Added 25,000 to the district report probation request. So everybody were working off the blue.
Yes.
She said the amended version.
The amended version.
The amended version at 3:00 PM.
Has a 3:00 PM, July 24, 2018.
So I so move for approval.
Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, that is also a roll call vote.
Tim Baloo.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Tyler Byrd.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Sup Paul Sudeen.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, then our next item is a resolution from the Special Committee of the Whole. We met this afternoon to hear the proposal for the level of service for the Lummy Island Ferry system, and you heard some people talking about that during public comment. We had a, I believe, unanimous recommendation to recommend to ourselves to approve that as the council. So do I hear a motion for that?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Byrd. Any discussion about the proposed level of service for the Lummy Island Ferry? Mr. Berg.
Just for reference, we've been going through all these items since about 9:30 this morning, so we've had conversation about everything here, just for everyone who's like, hey, they're just approving.
Good point. Yeah.
Usually, Councilmember Brenner makes that point, but.
Yeah, I'll have to give it to somebody else to make it this time.
I would, actually, before we vote, I'd just like to commend Roland Middleton and the Life Act folks, and everybody who's been working on this for a long time. I really appreciate your work, so. All right, and that is a resolution, so it's a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? So that carries 7-0. Next item is related to this. Council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. An appointment to the Lummy Island Ferry Committee for Nancy Ging, who has been on the committee and has moved off island and is now applying for the off-island position to be back on.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Nancy.
Yeah, I think she's here right now. She was here this afternoon. Okay, that's a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? That passes 7-0. Another, next item, executive appointment to boards. Request confirmation of the ex-appointment of Kathleen O'Conner to the Northwest Senior Services Board.
Move confirmation.
I'll second.
By Mr. Buchanan.
Oh, we just confirm, do we second the confirmation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
According to this.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor of that appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes 7-0. Introduction items, we have two items for introduction. Ms. Brenner.
I move to remove number two.
Do we need a second for that?
My, oh.
I'll second.
For a second.
Am I allowed to speak to Y?
Sure.
Okay. I really, okay, in all the world, we have some of the very best industries out of Cherry Point, the most environmentally sound than anywhere, and it really bothers me that everybody's so quick to say restrict, restrict. There's no way, a business thrives or it dies. It doesn't just stay the same. And this has gone on and on and on, and somebody should read King of Fish. I mean, I'm like one of these obsessive wild salmon lovers, and when I read that book and realized what we're getting from Asia, who don't have any of the regulations we have, we're getting tons of acidic rain, tons of acidic currents, and it's destroying our fish populations, and people don't see it, so they don't think it's happening. But it is happening, and I think what we need to do is create an environment at Cherry Point where they do more refining. I think that would be wonderful. So I'm getting tired of this moratorium, and it really, you know, just, anyway, I'll stop.
So I believe the main motion is to separate these out for introduction, and we had a second to remove item two from introduction. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of removing item two from introduction, which is the interim moratorium, the Cherry Point issue? Mr. Sudeen.
Just as a question, we can approve one by one. We don't have to take it out. I mean, we can consider the item one and consider the item-
I want it taken out.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Brown.
Madam Clerk, could you just remind us as to when the current interim moratorium expires and when we need to introduce this in order to-
I believe it's mid-September. So we would need to introduce this tonight, have the public hearing in two weeks in order for us not to have a lapse between ordinances.
Right, okay. So I'm going to speak against the motion.
Any other discussion? So all those in favor of removing item two from introduction, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Fails two to five, with Mr. Byrd and Ms. Brenner opposed. So we have a motion-
No, in support.
I'm sorry, in support of the proposal to remove that from introduction. So we now are back to, we have an item which is the application for Mr. Robert Woodell to the Wildlife Advisory Committee to be introduced, and the interim ordinance on Cherry Point to be introduced. I have a motion to introduce those two.
So move.
And a second?
Second that.
That's, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion on these introduction items? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, and that was Mr. Byrd and Ms. Brenner opposed. I'm sure that has nothing to do with Mr. Woodell.
I'm sure he does.
I just want to make sure. Okay. Committee reports. First committee report is Natural Resources. As Mr. Berg was saying, that was 9:30 this morning, so I have to kind of look back, but we had a briefing from Public Works on the Wyro One Watershed Management Board Plan. We gave a lot of direction and update to staff on that in terms of perspectives on where that plan was going. And we also had the presentation by the Ag Advisory Committee and Chris Elder on the Ag Strategic Plan, which we, I believe, just tabled to come back to at another time. Finance?
Yeah, I was not present, so I would request Mr. Byrd, or, Mr. Byrd, you want to do that?
Sure, go ahead. Sure. We had a ordinance, our discussion around the ordinance to, for the Swift Creek Sediment Management Fund, essentially setting up a fund to manage revenue that we will be using for the Swift Creek Sediment Management moving forward. That was approved. We also talked about the $2 million that was going to be budgeted in the ninth request here for item number two. It's page 52 through 66 in your pack. It's page 52 through 66 in your packet, and we actually, we increased that amount by adding another $25,000 to the ankle bracelet program. What else am I calling that? Okay, that works. So that we could have more, a higher number of participants within that program. Moving forward, that was kind of the big ones there. I move.
Committee of the Whole, do I do that?
You do.
I'll do that, okay. We had a presentation on the level of service for Lummy Island Ferry, which we just approved. I believe that was the rest of the committee. Criminal Justice, Safety?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a presentation, a discussion actually, with Superior Court Judge Garrett. She explained kind of the details about how she wanted to proceed in setting up a pre-trial unit for potentially all the courts, but certainly for Superior Court. We also had a presentation by Mr. Fallus on the, let's see, on the Public Defender's Office, correct. And he went through, you know, everything that's going on in his office, and it was very, very informative. Then myself and District Court Administrator Bruce Van Glut gave a report on the conference that we attended in San Francisco in June, which was about the incarceration of young adults ages 18 to 24, and we talked about the projects that we had brought home to take a look at the data and how we can improve our data collection system, and we're looking for one of the speakers at the conference, Dr. James Austin, to come out and maybe talk to the council or talk to the task force. We'll be moving forward on that.
And Special Committee Holden met again after that, and I actually mentioned the Lummy Island thing. We also discussed the preliminary draft of the comp plan and zoning amendments related to Cherry Point to replace this moratorium and are looking for more direction from legal counsel before we move on some of those items. I also forgot to mention that in executive session, we had a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Christopher Quinn and Public Works staff discussing how we're going to be dealing with legal issues related to the ongoing natural slow-motion catastrophe of asbestos in Swift Creek. I think that covers all of that. Other items? Councilmember updates?
Nothing.
I got to hear Barry sing this weekend. It was actually pretty darn good.
Did he play guitar?
He did. I was impressed. I told him I'd buy his CD.
Awesome. I've actually also seen Mr. Buchanan. It was good, but that's all.
I didn't get to hear it this weekend, but another time.
I've heard Barry sing on several occasions, but I think this weekend you were better than all the others.
Thank you.
I had a really bad news, good news type of event in my family. My wife and my son were traveling on I-405, and they had a really bad accident, and their vehicle was totaled. And, but thank God that they both walked out on their own, in the sense they pulled out through the front windshield, and of course, they're going through a little bit, but not major things, but could have happened. When we went back and looked at the vehicle, it was just amazing that they moved four lanes from the HOV lane all the way to the shoulder at 3:00 traffic time, and there was just enough opening on that five seconds that they were able to skid through that, and nothing hit them. And that's a miracle, so I'm very thankful, and like my wife said, go back and hug your dear ones, because life is very fragile. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, and with nothing else, I think we are ready to adjourn. Thanks, everybody.